And from the Florida Department of Health, we have participation from Administrator Dr. Yessenia Vialta, Dr. Samir Elmir, former Health Department Administrator Lilian Rivera, who came back from retirement and helped during the earlier part of the process, and Sarah Suarez. Many of them are joining with me today and can answer a lot of the questions that you may have. Our Deputy Mayors Ed Marquez, Jack Osterholdt, Maurice Kemp, and Jennifer Moon, as well as Senior Advisor Michael Spring. They all worked on this process. Most of them are on this virtual town hall, and they or their key staff can answer any questions about the business openings that fall into their specialty areas. I want to thank Deputy Mayor Moon for creating the color-coded guidelines with our key county staff and our consultants for this next opening. She's done a terrific job. Please go to MiamiDay.gov/newnormal for all the details. It's been a very thorough report, but it's also a very fluid document. It will change as our circumstances change. This is not written in stone. In other words, we are carefully opening businesses based on the gating criteria outlined by the CDC and the White House. We continue to tamp down the virus, so I'm really pleased about that. There is a light at the end of this COVID tunnel, and we are ready. But it will fall on each one of us and our residents to take personal responsibility and follow the rules. Let me repeat, it falls on you and me, for all of us, to get the economy going again. That means wearing masks when you enter any office, restaurant, retail shop, grooming, business, factory, museum, or warehouse. It means you must practice social distancing of six feet, and wash your hands often for at least 20 seconds, or use rubbing alcohol or hand sanitizer to protect yourself. Those rules are not changing. They are, in fact, the rules that are allowing us to open because they help prevent the spread of the virus. So remember our motto: I keep you safe, you keep me safe. You don't follow the rules, and our hospitalization numbers start to go up quickly, then we may have to resort to closing businesses and go back to remaining at home. That's something I certainly do not want to do. So take personal responsibility. If you see a business or people not following the rules, report it to 305 for police. That's the non-emergency number that police will answer and check on any violations. Again, that number is 305, and the number four, and then mark "police" on your phone number to connect. The new normal guide has a color system similar to what was used by homeless security following 9/11. When we closed everything except for essential businesses like pharmacies and grocery stores, we were in code red. When we opened our parks and open spaces a couple of weeks ago, we moved to code orange. And now this limited opening for office buildings, factories, retail shops, real estate, small businesses, barber shops and hair salons, museums, and warehousing and logistics businesses falls under code yellow. As our health statistics continue to improve, we will move to the green color, green phase, which would open all businesses but still require social distancing and facial coverings. The last phase would be code blue, and all businesses and facilities would be opening, but we would still encourage social distancing and facial coverings to keep our community safe. So that is our new normal, and we will need to get familiar with these rules and follow them. Let me tell you what is not going to open in this yellow phase, because I do not want any confusion about this. On Monday, Miami-Dade County will not be opening up beaches, hotels, except for those serving essential lodgers, hotel or condominium pools, spas or massage parlors, tattoo parlors, bars or clubs, gyms, dance studios, bowling alleys, movie theaters, any large events like concerts, and professional sports facilities that will not have any fans. Some counties elsewhere in Florida may be opening some of those facilities, but we're not ready to do that yet here in Miami-Dade. For instance, Broward County will be allowing condo pools to be opened under certain restrictions. And we'll continue to work with our medical experts to see when that would be feasible for Miami-Dade County. We already have the rules in place, and I need to speak to them. I want to make sure that businesses with a lot of physical contact and shared equipment like gyms or places like beaches where large crowds are likely to gather remain closed. We'll likely open at the next stage as we continue to see specific health criteria improve. I also want to stress that the countywide orders are a minimum requirement. If cities want tougher rules for their residents, they can do that. Some cities like Miami, Miami Beach, Hialeah, and others have different opening dates for restaurants or other businesses that will come after the countywide opening. So if you plan to go to your favorite barber shop or restaurant or whatever else, and that location is in a city, please check with that city first. I'm eager to take your questions, so I will quickly try to get into certain key points about our code-yellow opening. Rules are very specific for each type of business. But for every business that has been closed during the state of emergency, there's one practice that the store owners must do to make sure everyone's health is protected: flush all water lines and toilets. It's very important. It's a very important CDC recommendation, because those businesses most likely have stagnant or standing water in their plumbing lines, and those conditions can increase the growth of bacteria and Legionnaires' disease. So now I'm going to cover some basic rules you can expect at retail stores, grooming businesses, and restaurants. For retail stores, for instance, you should shop with a mask on and practice social distancing. If you do not want to, if you want to try on clothes and you decide not to buy it, the store owner will see that clothing, will set that clothing aside after you've tried it. They will later disinfect it or keep it aside for at least 24 hours before putting it back on the rack. That will protect the next person who goes into the store so that we're not spreading the virus. For barber shops and beauty salons, you cannot just walk in. You must have an appointment, and you will have to stay in your car or stand outside while practicing social distancing until you get called to go inside. These are small places, so we don't want to make sure that there is no crowding. You will be wearing a mask, and so will your barber and your hairdresser, and they will use gloves that they change with each client. You cannot get a haircut without having your barber or hairdresser first having your hair washed. This will protect others from spreading germs, so you must get your hair washed at the salon before you get it styled. These places will be set up so that there's separation between customers. For restaurants, the tables will be set at least six feet apart. No more than four people could be at a table, and everyone must walk in with a mask. A party of six will be allowed if it's one family from the same household. There will be clear rules about hand washing for the staff and waiters, and the waiters also have masks on. The restaurant menus will be disposable or available on your cell phone. Again, we don't want to spread any germs to the next customer who sits at that table. Also, car valet services for office buildings, restaurants, and other businesses will not be allowed if there is self-parking available. Valet service will only be allowed if there is no nearby parking. In that case, the valets will have to change gloves every time they pick up a car. Finally, for office workers, if you can work virtually and not have to go into the office, keep doing that. It's always safer at home until there's a vaccine or a treatment for COVID-19. At our county office buildings, we will continue to have as many employees as possible working from home as much as possible. Once we start to open up, if you have any questions, you can send an email to new-normal@miamidade.gov, and our staff will work on getting you an answer. That's new-normal@miamidade.gov. I also want to let our mom-and-pop businesses know that we realize it will be difficult for you to open without the masks, cleaning materials, and other necessities that can be hard to come by. So we're preparing a back-to-business box for those small businesses of limited income that qualify. On Sunday, you will be able to click on the application for the back-to-business box at our website, and that's MiamiDay.gov/newnormal. Small businesses that qualify will get an email with instructions to pick up your back-to-business box. I want to thank Governor Ron DeSantis for working with us to get us to this next phase. He's been terrific to work with, and I can't praise him enough. It's definitely going to be a different way of conducting business, but it's time to get going and open up our economy. Thank you all for following the rules and helping us get to this point. In fact, you know, I'm very proud of the way that all the residents of Miami-Dade County have acted so far, and it's because of that that we're able to now take this next step. Now Patty Abril from my communications office will start sharing the questions you have sent via Facebook, Facebook Live, and Twitter. Our doctors, my team, and I are ready to answer any of your questions. So Patty?
Thank you, Mayor. So kind of a broad question to begin with, but we have several versions of this question. Is the county truly ready to reopen to get into Phase One?
Yes, the county is truly open to begin Phase One, because we believe that the regulations and the rules that are put in place are a way that we can get back to business and do it in a safe manner. We're also seeing a steadying or reduction in the number of hospitalizations, a steady decline in the use of ventilators. We have a capacity, we have capacity of over 80% in our hospitals, critical care beds, ICU beds, all of that. We've seen a steady decrease in the use of, like I said, ventilators, and a steady increase in the capabilities and the capacities in our hospitals to handle any kind of surge that may come later. But if we follow the rules that are established, that are laid out in this plan, then we shouldn't see a spike or any increases in infection, because following these rules will keep us safe.
Thank you, Mayor. Now, social media is kind of blowing up this afternoon, because Governor Ron DeSantis announced that he's adding gyms into Phase One in the rest of the state, and a lot of the questions we're getting is what does that mean for Miami-Dade County? We're in Phase One now. Gyms for us, too?
No, gyms are different. Here in Miami-Dade County, as I just said, gyms will be closed. We will be putting together a group to see how we can do that safely here in Miami-Dade County. The problem with gyms is that there's multiple touch points of multiple people, and it's very difficult to control that. And so if somebody goes from one piece of equipment to another piece of equipment, they can spread the virus very easily. This is a highly contagious virus, and that is deadly to those that are 60 years and older. I think 85% of the people that have expired have died from this virus or 65 years and older. So it's a very significant health threat. Gyms are problematic. We're looking at ways that we can do that, but when it does happen, it has to be enforced. The rules have to be enforced vigorously, because I think gymnasiums are an issue right now.
There's some follow-up questions on gyms from some fitness studio owners. Are some gyms exempt from being closed, like group fitness studios where people don't necessarily touch each other's equipment? Can they already open? Some people think they can. Some of these business owners think that they can, and they cannot, right?
No, they cannot, no. Gyms, dance studios, all those kinds of Judo, Taekwondo, karate, no. Again, you have, a lot of those have a lot of people that are not family members, they're close, and again, we will look at that, and we will come up with specific regulations, recommendations, if we can, to make those spaces safe. But that's not, that's not part of the yellow phase that we're going to right now.
Okay, now, of course, the other hot topic around town is when can I get my hair cut? When can I get my nails done? When can I dye my roots? So barber shops, what's happening there? Can they only cut hair and not trim beards? What's, what are some of the rules? Because there's a lot of questions about that.
No, it's full-service, and barber shops can cut your hair, they can trim your beard, they can do that. They have to, they have to wash your hair. And so anybody, anytime that a barber or hairdresser is actually looking at you, they have to wear a face shield and take certain precautions, but that's open. And countywide, it's Monday, but you got to check with your city to see if they have a different opening date. But countywide, on Monday, you should be able to, you got to get an appointment, which I think is going to be a big rush, okay? So you got to stay in line, but yeah, if you can get an appointment Monday, you can go ahead and get your hair cut or styled or whatever. Remember, you have to stay outside until they call you, and you can stay in your car, or you have to, if you're outside, you have to practice social distancing. You have to wear a mask until they have to do some kind of service on you, where obviously wearing the mask is something they can't get around. And so the rules, those are the rules, are pretty specific, and so, you know, they will be open.
Great. Now we have a medical question. This could probably be one for the doctors. Paulina says, first, we didn't need masks, now we need masks. What is the medical explanation for the change in the advice, and why do we have to continue wearing them if it's okay to reopen in Phase One? One of the doctors want to take that one?
I'll be happy to address that. There's been a number of studies now that definitively show that there is a much lower transmission when masks are used. So they're definitely a help in reducing transmission of this horrific virus. The initial concept was that the mask was not that protective of the individual wearing it, but it soon became apparent that it was very much a protection for, that when you wear it, you're protecting others from getting infected. And now the more recent data is actually showing that even the cloth masks have a little bit of protection for the wear. So it's respecting others, that's one of the reasons. We may be unwitting carriers of the virus, and so that's one reason to wear it. And yes, it offers a measure of protection for yourself, but overall, the use of masks decreases transmission for the community.
Thank you, Dr. Marty. Anyone else want to add something? Any of the other doctors want to add something to that?
Yeah, so I completely agree with what Dr. Marty said. In addition to that, this is a new virus. At the beginning of the pandemic, we didn't have the information that we have today. We didn't know that asymptomatic people could go around and transmit the infection to others. So the mask, as she said, not only protects someone coughing, but protects the asymptomatic person that doesn't know that they're carrying and infecting others from infecting others. So you have to see the mask as two-way protection, and it's very important, very important, as we go back to a new normal, that people wear the mask appropriately. We see people walking around with the masks just covering the mouth and covering their nose. You have to cover your nose and your mouth. It's extremely important that you practice hand sanitizing often, water and soap or a hand sanitizer, because if you're touching surfaces and touching your face mask, you're contaminating the mask as well. So that's very, very important, is the mask and the hand hygiene that go together, is not one or the other.
Thank you, Doctor.
If I may add, can I may add, just to Dr. Abou's point and Marty, actually, when you're talking, you can still aerosolize particles on your, that can go and infect other people. That's why even me talking, I'm not necessarily coughing, I can spread the virus to you talking to me. That's why we maintain social distance, and if both of us wear the mask, I'm not going to give it to you, you're not going to give it to me.
And that goes back also to that point of, if you cannot social distance, the mask is absolutely essential. Okay, anybody else? I hear somebody trying to talk. No? Okay. We have a question here from the Lost Lake Tattoo Shop. We are a tattoo studio located here in Miami-Dade. Do you have any date in sight for our industry to open? And would we be required to follow similar or the same guidelines as the hair salons?
I would assume that you would have to follow at least the same guidelines that we do for hair salons, and because you are actively touching somebody, and there's also, there's also bodily fluids involved when you're actually putting on a tattoo, there's going to be some different, there's going to be even more stringent requirements. And so that is something we'll be looking into. I do not have a date for you, so I'm sorry, but we will be looking at your industry and seeing when and how and if it's an activity that actually can be done safely, but no date for you yet, I'm sorry.
And similar to that, we have dance studios and art schools and things like that, some of these places that provide some of the services for kids and the summer camps with people looking at going back to work next week. What can we tell residents about the possibilities of childcare over the summer?
They're going to be part of the gym class, and so gyms, and we're going to separate some of those, the gym category into gym, gymnasiums, you know, where you work out, and then those that you actually don't touch the same, the same equipment, and then dance studios, and, you know, and, you know, how can you do that in a safe, in a safer manner? So that's the next group of folks that we want to put together with our, with our doctors and say, okay, is there a way to do this? And then what would be the right time to move ahead? But right now, it's, it's not. Usually, a lot of these dance studios have a lot of people. You're teaching a lot of people at the same time in a confined space. We, we've got to work through that. So I don't have a date for that, but we will see what we can do.
Mariano Bries asks, I look forward to going back again to sit-down restaurants with my family, but I was hearing bread baskets will be banned. Is this true? Will menus have to be different?
Menus will be different. They're one-time-use menus. We don't want the same, you know, different people touching the same thing. And so you're probably going to see disposable menus, or you may have your menu on the, on the cell phone. Not sure about the bread basket. Probably not, but can somebody from the restaurant group answer that question about, that specific question about bread baskets?
It's much more likely that they will put individual pieces of bread for customers that want the individual pieces of bread. They're really trying to avoid cross-contamination between individuals, and so that's why we don't want to see things that are sort of communal, unless you're already from the same household.
So no totalas? Darn, okay.
No sharing from the bread basket?
Okay, all right, okay.
We each get our own piece of bread this time.
All right, very good.
Yeah, now, here's an enforcement question. How are you going to make enforcement in a mall, for example, as large as Dolphin, for 50% with so many entrances?
I expect that the enforcement aspect will be that you'll only have 50% of the parking spots available for one, and so that's the one way that you can, you know, easily look and make, and that's what we're going to be looking at, the, these malls, that every other stall is somehow blocked so that you can't park there. And then inside the mall, we expect, you know, social distancing, we expect the mall, they have security, and they understand that, you know, if they don't follow the rules, they may have to, they may have to shut down for a day or two as they establish those rules, but enforcement is key to the whole thing. Enforcement is key, but also personal responsibility is even greater. We have to take, you know, personal responsibility. We also have to, you know, keep away from folks, keep that social distancing. But yeah, those are some of the ways that we can enforce that, just making sure that only half the parking spaces are available to be used.
We have a lot of restaurant questions coming in. Is there a time limit on how much time can be spent in a restaurant? That's from Dane Norton Dean on Facebook.
Jen, do you have an answer? I don't think there is. Is there?
No, there is no restriction on the amount of time you can spend in a particular facility.
But I would expect that the restaurants would try to move you on, because they want to turn the tables now that they can only get 50% of their tables inside. I would expect that they would try to keep, move you, keep you moving, so they can turn more tables, you know, during a regular business day. But there is, we don't, we don't say that you can't stay there and talk for a while.
Okay, we have a couple of questions coming in from the media. Andy Slater from Fox Sports is asking, Mayor, can you please clarify if restaurants can exceed 50% capacity with the outdoor dining?
Outdoor dining, yes. If they, when they go outside, they can actually go to 100%, but they can't exceed 100%. So in other words, they can have 50% inside, and they somehow are able to expand outside into the, into the sidewalk, or maybe into a parking lot. They can get to 100% that way. But inside, they can't do more than 50%. And it's going to be really tough for these restaurants to get to 50% because of the six-foot separation. That's why we want, we kind of encouraging them to go ahead when they can, and they're physically able to, you know, go outside and do outside, do outside dining.
Okay, Anna Quervo from Telemundo is asking, what advice do you have for businesses that may not have had enough resources or time to get ready for Monday and be open on Monday? Now, people don't have to open on Monday, they just can, right?
No, nobody's ordering anybody to open. We're just saying you can. And so, you know, make sure that when you do open, you followed all the, all the guidelines. You know, some people say, well, why don't you just give everybody a week? Well, those people are going to be ready to open on Monday, so why, why penalize them? So those folks that can open on Monday and do it following the rules can open on Monday. If you have difficulty opening on Monday, you don't have to open Monday. As a matter of fact, you shouldn't open Monday. You need to open when you're ready to open, when you can follow the rules.
And maybe this is a good time to mention again, that you said at the beginning in your talking points about the business boxes that may be going out to some of these businesses who don't have the resources. Can you talk a little bit about that?
Yeah, we got about a thousand, you know, back-to-business boxes. These are really meant for small businesses, you know, maybe five, six people that may have, be having trouble with getting masks or getting sanitizers and all that. So we've, we've made a little box for them, and if you have problems, and if you are a small, small business, then we will put up a, you know, you can visit our website. I think it's going to be raffled if there's more than a thousand. If not, you know, we'll tell you how you can pick up your back-to-business box, so you can get back to business as quickly as possible.
Sounds like some good help. Okay, now Mercedes from America TV asks, what will happen if we start to see a resurgence of cases?
If we start to see a resurgence of cases, we'll see, we'll try to pinpoint the reason why we're seeing that, and then take whatever action we need to take in order to, you know, knock the virus down again. So I can't answer the question of what will happen until I know if it happens, and then why it's happening, and then, again, discuss this with our, our medical advisors and say, okay, what steps do we need to take next? And also the Florida Department of Health. So I really can't answer and tell you that right now until we know, until it actually happens, okay? And then we'll, we'll, we'll do the right thing, and we'll make sure we protect our community.
And can the doctors maybe weigh in on that? What kinds of things will you be looking at in order to report back on what measures we would need to take in the county?
So the county has a very well-defined plan that is color-coded, and that takes into account what level of protection we need, and if we see an increase in the number of cases that are being hospitalized, we're going to see a total number of cases going up. We want to have more people tested, we want to have contact tracing, and we want to make sure that when we contact someone that says you have been exposed, that person has a capacity to get tested and abides to the quarantine, the social distancing, and all the measures that have been in place. This is extremely important. We're in this together, and if we want to go safely into a new normal, we all need to be part of the solution and not be part of the problem. So in order to do this safely, we want to be measuring not just the number of people tested, the number of contacts tested, the number of people that require treatment, hospitalization, the severity of illness, the number of deaths, the number of intubations or mechanical ventilation in ICUs. All of that has to be closely monitored. We're doing that daily, weekly, and as we look at the trends, we want to make sure that we safely go back into this new normal. We also need to make sure that people are following the rules and the guidance that are in place. If people don't follow the rules, and if we see that people are crowding spaces, not following the social distancing, and we see an increase in the number of infections, we're going to take the respective measures.
And I want to, first of all, I totally agree with my esteemed colleague, Dr. Abu. And she and I were on a conference call yesterday where she produced a very nice chart about the testing that coincides very well with a stricter and a more well-planned-out way of doing the testing, so that we'll have these numbers in a sharper and clearer way than ever before. And we're going to be looking at where our reproductive number is. All the things that Dr. Abu just described will help us figure out whether we have gone in a direction that's not helpful. And when we look at the hospital admissions, we'll, we'll be looking very carefully, are they coming from a unique population such as nursing homes, and that's the only place they're coming from? Or are they coming from the wider community because of a drop in our guard or something that shifted in what we're doing? So we will be looking at this with extreme care, and thank you, Dr. Abu.
And Patty, to add to my esteemed colleagues, I mean, I think it's very important, the plan is very thoughtful. That's why you do not open the city altogether. You're opening phases, therefore it gives you time to assess what is the effect of that opening, and in terms of the number of cases hospitalized, ICU and ventilators and so forth. That's why it's very important to follow the phases, so then it's easy to step back if you see an increasing numbers.
A very important message for some of the other businesses that can't open yet, and they're feeling antsy and desperate to reopen, that there is a process, and it's part of that phasing in that allows you, the doctors, to keep an eye on what's going on. Very important point. Thank you so much. Okay, Mayor, a few questions like this one. Cities like Miami and Hialeah, two big cities with some of the highest infection rates and highest unemployment rates, have taken separate action. Was there a concerted effort from Miami-Dade County to communicate with the mayors of those cities to work towards some semblance of uniformity?
Yeah, we work with the League of Cities, and we, we talk with the League of Cities three times a week. And so that information is relayed to all the 34 different mayors that we have in this town, and the 34 different cities that we have in this town. The vast majority of those cities are following the guidelines of Miami-Dade County. There are certain cities that can go a little differently. They can go stricter, but they can't go any more lenient. Uh, and so, uh, all that information was available to them. All the information is available to the managers too. Remember, most of the cities here are a manager, council manager form of government. So we have representatives from, we talked to a, the, the Managers Association again three times a week through the same thing we're doing right now, the Zoom conferences. They, uh, they would last probably an hour to two hours, these discussions every other day. And so I don't know what else you could do. Uh, if they're, if they're complaining about not having information, they got all the information. And, uh, and guess what? I, they all know my, they all have my number, so they need this additional information. Just give me a call. All right? We'd, uh, we're not here to hide anything. And so again, you know, some of those cities have enforcement issues, some of those cities have other issues. Um, so that's why they chose to, timetable, which is their right, as long as it's stricter, not any more lenient than what Miami Dade County is doing.
Thank you, sir. Okay, we have, uh, in that same vein of, of the disconnect with some of the cities and the county, some people are asking, what about the curfew in Miami Dade County? What are businesses going to do if you're cutting people's work hours with the curfew? And if you reopen up businesses, can't the curfew be lifted?
There is no curfew in Miami Dade County. Miami, Miami Dade County never installed a curfew. Some cities did, Miami Dade County did not. So again, that's up to the cities to decide whether they want to lift their curfews or not. Uh, they can be stricter than Miami Dade, but not more lenient than Miami Dade. And so again, if there's some misunderstanding that somehow Miami Dade put up a curfew, that's, again, that's because certain cities did.
Now we have a few questions regarding, uh, one of our more vulnerable populations. And one of the questions is, should people 65 and older go out to businesses like restaurants?
Look, my, I'm 66. I intend to go out to restaurants, but I also intend to protect myself and my wife, uh, when we go. We will have our masks on, we will do frequent hand washing, we will, when we touch a surface, we make sure we won't touch our face. Uh, we will do the things that we have to do to protect ourselves, but we will also go out and about. And so that's my personal, um, that's what I'm going to do personally, all right? If somebody doesn't feel safe doing that, then, then fine, you don't feel safe doing that and then it's always safer at home and you're always safer at home. That's, that, uh, that mantra hasn't changed. You are safer at home, you're safer at home, everybody's safer at home. But again, um, you know, I, as Mayor of Miami Dade, it's going to be tough for me to stay at home. Uh, I haven't stayed at home. Uh, I've, once I went through my, uh, my, um, isolation period, uh, because of my exposure, I went out. Uh, I don't go out as often as I used to, but I expect that I will start to go out more and more, but I will always do so protecting myself.
Okay, and in that same vein of the, uh, 65 and older crowd, uh, one, uh, person is asking, will the 311 food deliveries continue?
Yes, they will. Uh, now we may, may set up some criteria for it, uh, but we intend to keep the food service because that's one way to keep 65-year-old, you know, folks, especially ones that went to community centers and the ones that they used to get lunches and breakfasts at the community centers. And for many of them, that was the only meal of the day. We are not going to be reopening up community centers. And so we need to make sure that they get those meals that they desperately need because that's the only meal they would get. So we're going to continue that program until, uh, as long as it takes. It's a very expensive program, but I think it's also a program that has helped to keep the, the number of people, the number of folks, elderly people out of the hospital. And I know that that program has saved lives.
Okay, thank you so much, Mayor. Now we have, uh, some more questions about the summer camp situation. We have a lot of people who've, uh, joined in a little bit late. So if we can touch a little bit on that, again, we have a lot of parents concerned about going back to work, not having a summer camp or a group scenario to be able to leave their young kids and they can't leave them home alone, not, can't take them to their jobs. What's going on with that?
Summer camp was supposed to start on June 8th. We have a, a group of providers that I have convened to discuss how, how if, uh, that, that, uh, summer camp activity, we can actually do that, uh, along with, you know, many of the fine doctors that you see here on this panel, uh, advising us. And so it's a difficult one, but we're working on it. And I understand the reason and, and believe me, I'm, I'm sympathetic. Um, you know, it's one of the things that we heard over and over again, hey, you know, one thing is, uh, daycare has never closed in Miami Dade. And so for those that, that had their, their children in daycare, the daycare centers have not closed. There's a different way they must operate. They can only put groups of nine kids and, and a teacher or nine kids and the caretaker together and they can never mingle, which probably, uh, affected their operating, the way they operated. We need to look at, see what we can do with our parks and there's a, a whole host of different providers for the summer, summer camps. Can we do it in a way that's, uh, that's, uh, healthy, that's, uh, that's safe? And so, um, that group is working, you know, right now as we speak.
Okay, we have, uh, some questions about the retail situation. Uh, trying on clothes and handling them and taking them home and returning them. What are some of the rules that will be happening in, in stores and clothing stores and places like that?
If you try on something, then the, the store has to disinfect it before it puts it back on the rack or it has to be put away for 24 hours. That, uh, if I'm, I'm not, uh, if I'm not mistaken, the 24-hour period allows for the, the virus to, to, uh, to die. All right? It, it can stay on clothes for a, a number of hours and live on clothes for a number of hours. And so that's the reason for the 24-hour delay. If you don't disinfect it, you got to put it away and then you can put it back on the rack, uh, a day later. That's, that's what I remember now. If I'm wrong, could a doctor please correct me?
Doctors?
Since they're not, since they're not correcting me, I must be right. All right.
Maybe the doctors could weigh in though on, on advice for people who are going to decide to go ahead and venture out to the retail stores and try on clothes and you're going through the racks and the hangers and the different items or, or looking at accessories or what have you. What are some of the things that we as consumers can do? You know, should, should we add the gloves to the mix? You know, what are some of those things that you recommend, doctors, for, uh, the consumers out there going back to the shops?
So the first recommendation, if you're sick, stay at home. If you're sick, don't go shopping and infecting others with a mask or without a mask. Don't go, don't, use common sense, which I think it's, it has to prevail throughout this pandemic and after. The second recommendation, again, social distancing. Don't go all jumping into the last dress size, uh, two that you're going to fit in. Um, you can social distance and talk to the, you know, customer assistant. Number three, wear a mask. Four, wash your hands. And, and again, there is no emergency in going shopping on Monday. Yes, we know a lot of people have been quarantined, everybody's eager to go out. Do things thoughtfully. Still, you can buy online and if you need to go to the store, keep the rules of the game. And I think the store owners will have to monitor the compliance with all the guidance that the team had put in place. The document is very thorough, very specific, very well-thought together. So please familiarize yourself with the document. The store owners and the, um, customer service representatives will need to enforce this and make sure we educate our consumers to do the right things.
Thank you, Doctor. Okay, we have this question now, Mayor, from Doug Hanks from the Miami Herald. If you're allowing enclosed dining rooms and restaurants to come back at 50%, why can't condo and homeowners associations, uh, try to maintain social distancing on pool decks? What are the risks that are being looked at? I guess this would be for the doctors, when it comes to pools and why is there a delay in opening back the pools?
Delay, the delay in that is that, uh, it's, it's harder to, especially in condos and all that, to, to, um, enforce it. Uh, and so, yeah, you can keep six feet. Look, if you keep six feet away from everything and put a mask on and, and wash your hands after you touch everything, you can probably do just about anything, right? But it's really hard to enforce. And it's really hard to enforce that same thing with gyms. It's really hard to enforce it. After somebody touches something, it has to be disinfected, all right? That's really hard to enforce. So how do we do that? What kind of rules are we going to? There is a pool committee, uh, and it's not just for, for condos, but, uh, but for also for hotels and, and we're looking at that. And, uh, and yeah, and we will take, we will open things when we think they're safe to open. And, uh, and so pools right now, they're not in that, in that mix. There's difference of opinion, I understand that, but, uh, we're gonna, we're gonna walk slowly and then move forward.
Okay, we have several versions of, uh, this question. Are any changes planned for transit starting on Monday with the expectation of more people starting to use the buses and the trains again as, as, uh, we go back to work?
Okay, Jennifer, why don't you handle it?
Yes, sir. Yes, we will be expanding, um, some of the service that we're providing now. Um, there will be information that will be sent out, um, this afternoon and made available on our website. But we want to remind everybody that you must wear facial covering when you are in a, uh, transportation terminal and on any of our transit facilities.
Okay, thank you. Okay, a big question, uh, that we're getting a lot of on, uh, the personal grooming or the salons. What exactly can people do at the salon? Is it just haircuts or can people do eyebrow waxing, their nails, makeup, things like that? We're getting a lot of questions about that. Can I get my nails done? Can I get my wax done? What are the rules on that?
Jen, take, Jen, take that one too. Again.
The mayor doesn't want to get his nails done, apparently.
There's a lot of detail in our guidebook that explains, um, all of the different rules that apply to personal grooming. And again, what, what people need to remember is that you must wear facial covering, um, and you must make sure that thing, that things are kept clean and sanitized regularly. And so it'll be up to each individual esthetician exactly how they, how comfortable they are in doing those different procedures as long as they can keep those rules in place.
But they can do all of that, that she, uh, that she said?
As long as they can. Yes, as long as they can do all of, as long as they can follow all of the guidelines i- in the facility where they are doing the service, yes.
Thank you very much. Okay, now back to restaurants. Uh, am I supposed to wear a mask while I'm eating in a restaurant? Of course not. So when we take it off in the restaurant, are we not safe anymore? That's from Anna Maradiaga.
Yeah, you're safe, you're safe because you're keeping social distancing. Uh, and then the waiter, waitress is also wearing a mask and keeping social distancing. And so, yes, but you know, we want to be safe, as safe as possible. And so while you're not eating, you should wear a mask, okay? And so we understand that it's impossible to wear a mask and eat at the same time unless they develop a, an eating mask, okay? Which I don't think they will. Uh, but, uh, you know, that, it's, it's just to keep you as safe as possible until you can't do it. Same thing with getting a haircut, by the way, all right? You, you have to wear a mask until there, they gets to a point where, look, I want to do something around your ears or something back here, you got to take the mask off, right? Uh, and so you want to remain as safe as possible until you have to take the mask off.
Okay, now, uh, to a testing question, is Miami Dade planning on increasing testing going into phase one and what about tracing?
We, uh, we plan on, on hiring, um, between 800 and 1,000, uh, contact tracers and Jack Ventolina is, is heading up that, uh, that endeavor for us. You may want to, you know, chime in, Jack. Jack, um, and, and testing, uh, part of our, our, part of the entire process is that we, we must have a robust community-wide testing program. And so we, um, we are also working, we have one, but now we're switching to a different kind of a test, but we will continue to have a robust community-wide testing program. We're also going to be focusing in on our nursing homes and our long-term care facilities where we have a lot of elderly which are at risk. That's where the ba-, the battle is going to be fought, you know, now. And we will be, you know, taking steps to protect them too. And so, yes, yes to all three. So Jack, you want to, you want to chime in on this?
Thank you, Mayor. Actually, you're absolutely correct. Um, we are going to continue working alongside with the state, uh, to take our current testing program and add to it and enhance it to a more robust testing program. And we're working very closely with the state in reference to the contact tracing program to see how we can, uh, add additional resources in order to, um, meet the needs of the county.
Thank you, Jack. Jack, what exactly is contact tracing for some people who may not know what that phrase means? It's kind of the buzzword now, but a lot of people don't even know what it is.
So I, I'll be more than happy to give a stab, but I'm sure the doctors will chime in and fill in any gaps I might leave out. But the contact tracing is actually a, a very, uh, important process in containing this virus and it relies on human beings, um, contacting those who have been identified as having a positive result in a test in order to find out who they've had contact with within a certain time period that's predefined, in order to, uh, document those contacts, reach out to those individuals to then assess them, see if they're having, um, symptoms and help guide them on what they need to do. Uh, also that they need to be more cautious in, in quarantining and monitoring their own health, uh, for a certain, uh, determined amount of time as well. Uh, ideally, this contact tracing will also involve, um, periodic testing of those contacts in, in ideal situation. So alongside with our, uh, doctors and experts and the state, we're going to take the current system that's in, in place and, and actually occurring and see how we can enhance it and, and make it, uh, a more robust system in order to meet the needs.
A simple, simple way to think about it is that contact tracing is figuring out who might have gotten infected from whoever was positive. So, um, and the, and it involves all the things that Jack described, but because of the things that Dr. Abu said earlier, specifically that we have so many asymptomatic carriers and the data is showing that most of those people that are true contacts that have been infected are household members, our new plan is going to include the testing of the household contacts. So, there you go.
And, and to, so people can understand also in lay terms, if we have learned from other pandemics or other infections, for example tuberculosis or HIV/AIDS, the beginning of HIV/AIDS, it was also extremely important and still today, whenever we have a sexually transmitted disease, we always go back to the tracing of who were you in contact with so we can protect the rest of the population. It's extremely important for public health to contain the spread of these infections. You really need to know who else could be infected to stop it. So it's a very proactive measure that you, you don't wait until people are infected and sick and in the hospital, you try to prevent that. And that's very important and that's so important, the contacts and to test them in a timely manner. You want to prevent further spread.
And, and this mechanism is what's worked very well in the countries that have managed to very rapidly bring down their, uh, their caseloads.
Uh, thank you, doctors. Uh, well, I'm, I'm Samir Elmir from the Health Department. The concept of contact tracing is not a new concept. It's a very important element of the, uh, disease investigation, like it was mentioned before by other doctors. So contacted tracing, it's a very, very important element and I think we're working with the Health Department, is working very closely with the county to enhance this program and to make it more robust and, and, and to get better results. So we can contain, isolate the virus and stop the, the spread of disease of COVID-19 in the community.
Thank you so much. Okay, we have a few, uh, similar questions to this one, uh, coming up on Facebook Live. Temperature checks at stores, is that going to be something that retailers are required to do, uh, for their employees and their customers?
Jen?
We do suggest that there be, um, temperature checks for employees, but we are not going to require that every customer or visitor of a business or commercial establishment or facility be temperature tested on their way, um, in or out of the facility.
Also, remember that temperature checks may give you a false sense of security. You may come by a lot, if not most of the, of the people that probably are infected with, uh, COVID-19 probably don't have a temperature. Uh, and so, uh, sometime during their, their infectious, uh, stage. And so, um, remember, the whole thing is, we must all assume that we are all infected. And if we act that way, then we have a much greater chance of not being infected, not infecting others and ourselves not being infected. So, uh, again, the, the whole temperature thing, yes, you may catch some, but there's a whole bunch of people that, uh, are going to register fine that actually are contagious.
We have a question from Carmen Gomez on Facebook. She has her mother in a nursing home and she really wants to see her mom. Her mom really wants to see her. She's asking if a nursing home hasn't had any problems, like she's saying the one that her mother is and hasn't had any problems. She's asking, if a nursing home hasn't had any problems, like she's saying the one that her mother is in hasn't had any problems, why can't that those be open for relatives to visit?
Because the reason why they haven't had any problems is because they're, they're closed to outside visitors. And so that's the reason why they haven't had any problems. But they, look, you're going to play a numbers game. Eventually, somebody who's contagious is going to go into a nursing home. If you have outside folks, look, we have enough trouble with the people that are working there, all right? And so when you start now adding folks, you know, that from the outside, it's just, you're just playing Russian roulette. And so I understand, I have the same thing with my father. He's in a, you know, he's in a adult living facility and I haven't seen him in a couple of months. See if you can get, get somebody to FaceTime with with her and, and enjoy her that way. But to open up a nursing, a nursing home to outside, outside visitors, you're just, you're just asking for trouble. So I'm sorry, but, you know, those, those rules are there for us.
Thank you. Okay, we have a couple of questions. People are saying that they're going back to work. They want to know if you are too. To the office, they mean.
I've never stopped working. If you haven't seen me, okay, I don't know where you've been.
I think they mean.
No, look, if you don't have to go back to an office, don't go back to an office, all right? And so, you know, in Miami Dade County, I've, I've actually made it, you know, told, told my staff, my, my directors and all that. I don't want people coming into the office, they don't have to be in the office. Because we still have COVID-19 and you're still safer at home. We've also found out that a lot of us are a lot more productive at home than we are at the office. And so I would expect, and I would urge all businesses, if you don't need your employee, your employee doesn't have to come back to an office or do something, then let them work at home. And I understand there's some business you can't. Look, if you're, you're in a retail and you have to show customers the merchandise and all that, you can't stay in the office, I mean, stay at home and do that. But there are a lot of, of folks that can work very well out of their home and not have to go into an office. And that helps us out in a lot of different ways. A, less exposure, A, less people exposing other people, less people getting exposed. And even in traffic, it helps too. So, no, I, well, I may go to the office a little bit more. But I found out that I'm actually much more productive in my house than I was in the office, all right? And I have many more meetings here, much faster timeframe here than I ever did at the office. And so, you know, I intend to go to the office every once in a while, but also tend to do a lot of my work where I've been, which is home.
Okay, Nelson Martel on Facebook is asking about churches. There's been some misinformation out there that churches were ordered to close, they never were. So he's asking, will they reopen? But I guess the question is, should they start, the people, those churches who have been doing online services, should they start bringing the congregations back into the buildings?
The, the churches are never closed. We, we recommended that churches, you know, if they were going to be open, to do no, no more than 50% to have social distancing. So those recommendations are still in place. But we have never put any kind of regulations on churches or places of worship. But we still do recommend that they limit their, their congregation size and that you wear masks when you're inside, and that also that you, you practice social distancing. That's, that's a very strong recommendation to places of worship.
Okay, a kind of important question that, you know, it's, it's hard to answer, but that a lot of people are asking is, what is the timeline between phases? What are we looking at between this phase and then moving on to the next things?
There is no timeline. Only when it, when we think it's safe. And as we come up with different regulations or recommendations on how we can open up certain other things. But there is no timeline.
Uh, some folks looking ahead here to the fall, to the school year, and asking about what are some of the things that are maybe being talked about with the Miami Dade County School Board about how to keep kids safe in school, especially the little kids that can't wear a mask all day long and share school supplies and crayons and they touch each other? What are some of the things that are being talked about as far as school in the fall?
Uh, I'm sure that the superintendent is working with the school board on this issue. We will chime in, obviously, if, to make sure that whatever it is that they're doing is safe. And so I'll, I'll be having discussions with the superintendent about what his plans are for, for the fall. Obviously, with our medical experts and our medic, the same folks that are here right now, the same doctors that have been guiding us through this process. You know, I would expect that they would be part of that process too. What's the data with children and the transmission of, of children? Are they transmitting it to each other? Or do they have, are they low, low-risk carriers? I, I don't have the answer right now. Good thing is, we have a little bit of time before the fall, so we'll work it out before then.
Okay, here's a question for Dr. Marty. They would like to hear from Dr. Marty regarding the choice to go up to the 50% capacity as opposed to the 25% capacity in the restaurants. Dr. Marty?
Thank you. Well, the, the bottom line is, can the restaurant meet the social distancing requirements of the tables and the passageways? And if they can, they can go up to 50%. That's, that's what we've decided to do because it really does, it's not, it's not really about the percentage of people. It's about whether or not we can maintain these distances and if they have proper ventilation. Because that's the only other factor with the percent of people is if, if you had very bad ventilation in, in a restaurant, then, then it would be an issue. So they have to meet all the requirements of having their facilities completely ready and being able to accommodate the appropriate social distancing and hygiene rules and everything else that we have in place, in which case 50% is perfectly reasonable.
Thank you so much. Okay, now this is a question.
Remember, Patty, let me, let me add something to that. Yeah, the, the 50% isn't the, the primary objective. It's the social distancing of six feet. If they can reach 50%, great. But if they can't, they can't. And so, you know, they, they, we don't expect restaurants to say, no, well, wait a minute. Here, it's 50% and so I wasn't able to because, you know, I got 50%. No, 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 it doesn't work that way. You have to have the social distancing. You have to have the spaces between the chairs, between the tables. And then if you don't reach 50%, well, you don't reach 50%. Now we've allowed you to go outside if you can, all right? If you can do that, and then you can reach up to 100% when you go outside. And so the, those factors of social distancing and distance between tables takes precedent over reaching 50%.
Okay, we have some questions regarding restaurants in that same vein of, of social distancing. And we have some questions coming up on Facebook about, you know, are there going to be attendants at the bathrooms? Is there going to be six feet spacing between urinals and the men's room? These are actual questions we're getting on social media right now. Are those requirements?
Those are actually extremely good questions because we do know that the virus can be aerosolized with flushing of the facilities. So the recommendation is that only one person should be in a restroom, no matter how many stalls there are at a time.
Thank you, Dr. Marty. Anyone else want to chime in on that? Okay. So we have a question that goes to the mass gatherings, which we know is a ways off. But we have a lot of business owners in South Florida with banquet halls and party services, wedding planners, things like that. And they want to know when that is going to be a factor again in the economy? To what capacity would banquet halls be able to reopen? What restrictions? They have clients with pending events for months. Should people be canceling their, you know, party that's in October or November? What, what are we looking at when it comes to, to those types of gatherings?
Yeah, large gatherings, we haven't, we haven't eased up on the large gatherings. And I don't believe we will. So until you have an antiviral or you have some kind of a, of a vaccine. So those, those kinds of, you know, maybe a banquet hall could have the same restrictions as a, as a restaurant. You know, six feet apart, that kind of stuff. But in terms of mass gatherings, no, I don't think so. Okay, that's, that's where, you know, you have a mass transmission of this, this virus. And so that's, that's probably not going to be, that's not in the works for a while.
For a while? So if, if someone's planning a wedding for the end of the year, is, is it feasible to say that they should probably cancel a large event and, and do something small?
I can't, I don't have a crystal ball. I don't know when, when an antiviral will be developed. I don't know when a vaccine is going to be developed. So I can't tell you, hey, you got a January wedding, cancel. I, I'm not going to do that, okay? I think you need to keep your eye, keep your eye on what's happening around the world and happening with developments with this virus. And then you're going to have to make your best guess, you know, and when you have to make your best guess.
Okay, we have a, a few simple questions, I guess, but they're important. Are the courts opening on Monday?
The what?
Courts, the courthouses.
Jennifer, do you know that?
Um, we've not been made aware that they will be. But Monday is, is simply a day that business and commercial establishments can open. We're still working on fully planning for government services, including courts and, and other libraries and other public facilities.
I, I have had the privilege of having spoken to a number of the judges and they are in the works of making all their plans in order to, to see exactly when and how they plan to open the court. So that's still, that's a work in progress.
Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, a lot of people want the beaches open, Mayor. And they're asking, how are beaches and pools deemed unsafe, but malls are not?
Beaches, uh, the problem with beaches is the number of people that will be coming in close contact in the, and the problem with enforcement. And so that's the problem with beaches. The other thing too is that there are some cities on the coast that have made it very clear that they're not going to open the beaches. And so you can't really open a couple of beaches because then, then it just exacerbates the problem of everybody flooding into a couple of beaches. And so we have, we have committed to Broward that, and Broward has committed to us that we will open together. Uh, now, again, there are, there are at least one city I know of that said they won't open before a certain date. And so, and it has a long stretch of beach. So if we, Broward in Miami Dade opens the beaches and then a long stretch of beach in Miami Dade is not open, that means everybody else is crowded into the beaches that are open. That just makes the problem worse. That's the issue right now. And so that's, that's the issue. That's why beaches aren't, aren't open right now. And, and, and look, it's not that we would, even if that city would say, hey, tomorrow we want to open, that we would do that. Again, there's an enforcement, there's, there's miles of beaches, but there's also millions of people that want to get to the beaches. And so that's, that's the issue. And the ability to keep them apart and, and all, so not right now.
Okay, we have a question regarding workplace safety. The guidelines instruct certain business owners to report what is, quote, unusual absenteeism. This person, Evi Sejas, on Facebook is asking, what does report unusual absenteeism mean? And to whom do we report it?
I, I can try to answer that. The idea is that if, if you have somebody who hasn't been to work for a while, you may want to check on them and make sure that they aren't sick. When the pandemic first began, a lot of the people who were first, who first tested positive and ended up in the hospital had simply gotten sick and stayed home and didn't, and didn't know that they needed to, you know, identify that they needed to be tested. And so the idea is, make sure you know where your employees are and if they need to be tested, get them tested.
Thank you, Jennifer. So.
We actually put, we actually put into the recommendations that we wanted larger businesses like hotels and so forth that we're looking for in the future. They're not opening right away, as, as the mayor said. But to have a little team that makes those assessments every day about the conditions of the employees and the conditions of their guests. And, and to have a logbook of this information that will be useful for Florida Department of Health, should something happen in one of their facilities, and also will help them and us assess the safety of what's going on. So part of that reporting is also internal to their internal groups. Restaurants were also asked to have these kinds of groups, for example.
Thank you so much, Doctor. How about this question from Jackie Gordon Fernandez on Facebook? She's asking, what about hosting friends at private homes? We can go to sit at a restaurant now, what about hosting friends at private homes? What are some of the things that people who want to, you know, keep things safe but want to have their friends over? What should they be doing?
They should be practicing the same things that they do when, when they're going into an inside space. Probably should be wearing masks, et cetera. But when they go outside, keep social distancing. Nobody here is saying that you can't host, you know, a, a small private dinner party or something like that. You can, all right? Try to limit the number of people to 10 or less. But again, use common sense inside. If you're not the same household, should we be wearing a mask? If it's outside, keep your distance. You can use different serving utensils. You can have separate tables and just, you know, make sure you just keep your social distancing. And then, you know, just be careful. That's what they should do.
And Mayor, you just mentioned, I think it's important to point out that that 10 or fewer group size still applies.
Yes, but you know, I mean, it's, we, we don't, it's, it's, it's hard. It's almost impossible for us to say, oh, we're going to go into somebody's home, okay? And, and do that, we're not going to do that, all right? And so we want you to be responsible, you know, to have a party with 50 people, that's not, that's not in your best interest. Because somebody there, the odds are somebody there could be contagious and then spread it to the other people. But if you keep it to a smaller party and then you, and you can't as much as possible keep it outdoors and stay away from each other and not use the same, you know, serving utensils and, and then not touch your nose or whatever, and nose and face and wash your hands often, you can do it safely. But, you know, follow the same guidelines that you do when you're basically going outdoors. I think that's what you should be doing, okay?
Thank you, Mayor. Okay, we've been at this for a little over an hour, so I think we can wrap it up with one more question. We have someone asking, what if I am confused about what category my business falls under? Not sure what business he's talking about, but where do they ask? And we do sometimes get a lot of questions when the emergency orders are issued. Does this apply to me? What am I supposed to do? And does my business fall under this? Where can people go for clear information?
Jen, what's the number?
Um, you can call 311 for general questions. You can email at new-normal@miamidade.gov. And you can also, if you have concerns about perhaps some, some business or somebody not following the rule, you can call 3054POLICE, P-O-L-I-C-E.
Jen, what's that email address again? So we can repeat it one more time. And I think we'll post that on our social media channels as well for people to be aware that there is a place where they can ask questions. Go ahead.
Absolutely. It's new-normal with a hyphen between the words. N-E-W hyphen N-O-R-M-A-L at miamidade.gov.
Thank you so much. Okay, so I think that'll do it for our virtual town hall today. We had a lot of great questions, a lot of questions that the doctors were able to answer. Mr. Mayor, any last words before we sign off this afternoon?
Yeah, remember, you know, I protect you, you protect me. That's, we, we should take that to heart. You're safer at home, you're still safer at home. But when we do go out, follow the rules. Follow the rules, and we all follow the rules, we'll be just fine. And I want to thank the, the fine doctors that are here and health professionals. Thank you so much for all you've done for us to keep us safe and we, and the work that we still have to do to, to move forward with and defeating COVID-19. I'm very happy that we'll be able to take this first step on, on Monday. And hopefully we can take future steps as we continue to tamp down and to defeat and reduce the incidence of infection here in Miami Dade County. If we follow the rules, we'll continue to do that. And so again, thank you, everybody, for joining us. Thank you, doctors, medical advisors, for all your work. And have, have a nice weekend. And then on Monday, you know, if you need to go get a haircut, go ahead and get a haircut, all right? Thanks.
Thank you, Mayor. Good afternoon, everybody.